First items roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Baman. Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Hedley.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Next on the invitation led by Daryl Jones from Crossroads Church called by Pledge Leaks from Alderman West.
That's right. God, we are, well, I wish we could say eternally grateful for your goodness, but I don't know that we can even conceive of that. So, at least today, we're grateful for your goodness. And as we look not only through the last few days, the last few weeks, today, and as we look to the future, I'm glad that you're in control, that you are in constant care for and absolute rule over all your creation for your glory and for the good of your people. I'm thankful tonight to be able to be here, and thank you for our city staff, their diligence and their hard work, our elected officials, those that have served for a few years, those that have served for many years. God, we give you thanks tonight for all the work that's been done, all the work that's going to do for the transitions tonight. We give you thanks for Dale and his many years of service, and just pray that he would continue to be with Ian Sheila as they continue on with their lives and their family. And, God, we just pray you add blessings to them as well. Bless this meeting tonight. I don't know what's before us, but we just pray that it will be done decently and in order and according to your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Next item is procreation. We have a proclamation for Grand Valley High School Royal Talent Dance Team. They were unable to attend this evening, so we will get that proclamation to them. Next item then is citizens' participation. We ask the citizens to wish to address the board, come forward to the podium and microphone, and please give your name and address for the record. Anyone wish to address the board this evening? Move on to consent agenda then.
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Vice President Alderman West to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Hedley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All aye, same sign. No previous business or presentation. Move on to resolutions.
Mr. Mayor, this is Resolution R eighteen dash nineteen, which is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to provide one hundred percent healthcare premium rate coverage for each eligible employee and sixty-five percent of remaining premium coverage for employee dependents when applicable. Resolution R eighteen dash nineteen.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution R eighteen dash nineteen as read.
I have the motion Alderman West to approve Resolution R eighteen dash nineteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Arnold. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is the item that we had presentation over last, at the last board meeting by Ms. Holland. It's simply keeping the rates of contribution the same for the employee and dependents for 2018, and we decided that after we complete the comprehensive master, or the comprehensive compensation study, that we would again take a look at the percentages. It does represent about a nine percent, eight to nine percent increase in healthcare costs for the upcoming year. Other than that, Ms. Holland covered everything in the presentation, but we're happy to answer any questions if you still have them.
Questions or discussions? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All aye, same sign.
Six, zero, Mayor.
Five.
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 I can't count. Five, zero.
Next up, ordinances.
The first ordinance is Bill B eighteen dash zero six. It's on the agenda for two readings tonight. First reading, an ordinance approving the purchase of the city of Grand Valley, Missouri, of real property from David L. and Susan J. Nichols, and authorizing the city administrator to execute all necessary documents required to effectuate and close said transaction, including a budget amendment to allow for purchase. First reading, Bill B eighteen dash zero six.
Mayor, I move that we accept the bill. Three teen dash six for its first read, bring it back for its second read tonight by title only. I have the motion Alderman Arnold to approve Bill B eighteen dash zero six for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, just a few follow-up items on this. As you recall, this is what we met in Executive Session Four on April twelve. Actually, on March twenty-sixth, the city reached out to the broker of the Nichols Building, just to talk to him about it. Interest had been indicated by various elected officials over the years, and most recently by the mayor. We talked to them, had some initial discussions with her to find out what the asset price was, and to try to get some comparisons of what the property in the area was worth. After that executive session, or hearing that executive session, we held a, there was a five to zero vote authorizing me to reach out to the realtor and negotiate an agreement with them, and to go ahead and get a real estate contract started if we were able to reach that negotiation. We were able to do that, and the way that this purchase is split out is between the general fund, the public health reserve, and the water sewer reserve, which would be a typical accounting split for a building that's going to have a use like this. We're thinking about things like public service uses, activity centers, that sort of thing. One of the questions that came out of the executive session was where we stand in each fund as it relates to the GASB fifty-four policy that says at any certain time throughout the year, the city will have twenty-five percent of its operating, its annual operating budget saved in reserves. The spreadsheet that I just handed out shows that we meet and exceed the GASB fifty-four policy that is adopted, and so accordingly, we have in the general fund, three million thirty-three thousand sixteen dollars. Public health reserves, we have a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, a hundred and forty-seven thousand ninety dollars. And in the water sewer reserve, we have three million eight hundred and eleven thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which is what will be a portion of that is what will be used to purchase this facility. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions or discussion?
So, money-wise, out of the actual reserves, we're looking at, what, one seventy-five-ish?
We're out of the...
Because we had discussed, because we had the budgeted amounts, with the bucket truck in the budget at, what, one forty?
Correct. Yeah, one hundred and forty thousand dollars. The amended fund balance is transferring the money over in full for this purchase.
And then we just don't...
And then we just, it's up the board's discretion not to purchase that budget, that item. What I didn't want to do was provide paperwork to the seller that says we've rededicated funding that was going to be spent for equipment to use, so I wanted to be able to show with the amended fund, or the amended budget that we took funding from the reserves to pay this amount, which is found on the last page of the ordinance.
Questions or discussions then?
You've had meetings with the Realtor and the...
Yes. Visited with Pastor Geiger last week, and have visited with the realtor as well. Have not met with the church as a whole, but I did share with him when we visited that I think everybody has a community interest in mind with this building, and I'm happy to come and address the congregation to share that vision with them if they would like. So I think that, especially the close proximity that we are with the church down there, I think that we can both be good partners to each other.
You have anything else? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All aye, same sign.
Five, zero, first vote, first read. Second reading will be Bill B eighteen dash zero six, and it will be ordinance two four three four, and ordinance approving the purchase by the city of Grain Valley, Missouri, of real property from David L. and Susan J. Nichols, and authorizing the city administrator to execute all necessary documents required to effectuate and close said transaction, including a budget amendment to allow for purchase. Second reading, ordinance two four three four.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill eighteen dash six for its second read and make it ordinance two four three four. I have motion Alderman Arnold to approve Bill B eighteen dash zero six for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty four thirty four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All aye, same sign.
Arnold?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
West? West?
Yes.
Sorry. Five, zero, Mayor. The next ordinance is also on the agenda for two reads, is Bill B eighteen dash zero seven, an ordinance declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Grain Valley, Missouri, April three, two thousand eighteen. First reading, Bill B eighteen dash zero seven.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B eighteen dash zero seven for its first reading and bring it back for a second reading by title only. I have motion Alderman Coleman to accept Bill B eighteen dash zero seven for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, as it suggests, this is just a certification of the results from the April election.
Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All aye, same sign.
Five, zero, Mayor, first. Second reading will be eighteen dash zero seven. It will be ordinance two four three five, which is an ordinance declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Grain Valley, Missouri, on April three, two thousand eighteen. Second reading, ordinance two four three five.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B eighteen dash zero seven for its second reading, making it ordinance number twenty four thirty five. I have motion Alderman Coleman to accept Bill B eighteen dash zero seven for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty four thirty five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Arnold. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All aye, same sign.
West?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Five, zero, Mayor. She'd like to have you and the rest of the family there as well.
I just, I want to have everyone come up, because I know, I'm seeing you sitting in here for meeting, half of the meeting, half of the meeting, and I know a lot of people realize that we get involved in this, because we're really a family there. And I know it's probably the vacations moving around, dinners moving around, things like that, making the city meetings, things like that, so I just want to, you know, recognize the entire family, and thank you for all of your, you know, for us, for you, letting us have ramp all, and what we have, so we got to have more time with you now. So, I want to give you a plaque in here, honor all your service in City of Grain Valley. I don't think there's words that can say all that you, you know, sound for the city, with your family being in the city, with your work with the club, and, you know, the city, and not only that, but, I mean, as you've worked through as well, so you're, you know, we're all happy to do this, so we thank you for everything you've done in City of Grain Valley. We will take a short ten-minute recast, and then we have a case to refresh us in the back, so we will, if you have some room for us. Do you have orders?
First up is, let's just, well, let's just pick lots of offices. First up is Mayor.
You want to come up? Come on, Harper.
He needs to take off, too.
Aye, my God.
Do you call him square or firm?
Call him square or firm.
That I possess the qualification?
That I possess the qualification.
For the office of requirement prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law.
With office of the mayor?
With office of the mayor.
I support the Constitution of the United States?
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of the third?
And the state of the third.
And provisions of state statutes?
And provisions of state statutes.
And the court of courts.
And the court of courts.
And the ordinance of the city of Grain Valley, Missouri?
And the ordinance of the city of Grain Valley, Missouri.
And I shall faithfully conduct myself in office?
And I shall faithfully conduct myself in office?
And respect the confidence and information?
Respect and respect the confidence and information?
Which comes in my possession?
Comes in my possession. So help me God. Thank you.
Next up, we have the Okobostas for the Alderman. Do them all together, unless someone just really wants to do it by themselves.
All right. If you're writing a name, you have to meet. I state the name.
I state the name.
Do you call him square or firm?
Do you call him square or firm?
That I possess the qualification?
That I possess the qualification.
For the office of?
For the office of.
Alderman, do you hear the word?
Alderman, do you hear the word?
I support the Constitution of the United States?
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of the third?
And the state of the third.
The provision of state statutes?
The provision of state statutes.
And the court of courts.
And the court of courts.
And the ordinance of the city of Grain Valley, Missouri?
And the ordinance of the city of Grain Valley, Missouri.
And I shall faithfully conduct myself in office?
And I shall faithfully conduct myself in office?
And respect the confidence and information?
Respect the confidence and information?
Which comes in my possession?
Comes in my possession?
Do you need to go on to do pictures of your family?
Come on, you have to. Move on, seeing no new business, ordinances, resolutions. Next up then is city attorney reports. Next up then is city administrator staff reports.
Start with Chief Starbuck.
Mayor and board, I just want to recognize the fine work of your police department. Last month, the Jackson County Drug Task Force, of which we have an officer that is actively involved in that, they were recognized for a regional award by the Drug Enforcement Administration. And one particular case was they got involved in an investigation of a drug cartel that was bringing in multi-pounds of methamphetamine into the Kansas City metropolitan area that was affecting the entire Kansas City metro area and all surrounding counties. For about a year and a half, they made hundreds of undercover buys, eight wiretaps, and the result of the spinoff investigations resulted in federal charges filed on twenty defendants and the seizure of approximately two hundred and ten pounds of methamphetamine, as well as numerous firearms. In addition, our police department was recognized just last week by the Crime Stoppers Tips Hotline. They awarded Grain Valley Police a special recognition award. We work closely with the Tips Hotline and follow up on a lot of tips, and our citizens are kind enough to call in, and that's resulted in allowing us to successfully solve some crimes and also locate some fugitives in Grain Valley. And then I'd also remind everyone that next weekend, on Saturday, April twenty-eighth, in the morning, I believe starting at eight or nine, we'll have the coffee with the cop. It'll be in the eating area at the Price Chopper Store, and there'll be various police officers, and those are always nice events. Officers will sit in there and drink coffee and eat too many donuts, and a good time to sit and chat with citizens in a low-key setting. And then simultaneously, while that's going on, we will have the first of two of the prescription drug disposals, and we'll have VIPS, volunteers, and officers out here right in front of City Hall from nine to one, and citizens can pull up and just drop off any unwanted over-the-counter meds or prescription drugs, and those will be safely disposed of by DEA. That's all.
Just wanted to chat briefly tonight, May twenty-eighth is the board of Alderman meeting, and it falls on Memorial Day, so I wanted to talk to you all and see what you wanted to do about the meeting that night, if you wanted to cancel, or your preference for that date. Not that somebody's asking about it.
Yeah, a lot depends on what we got going on the agenda, if we just need to meet that week or meet the next week.
Yeah. Um, I can tell you that I'll be on vacation, so the Monday before and the Monday after, I wouldn't be available. If there was some pressing issue that we needed to do, we could call a special board meeting. If you wanted to cancel it, otherwise, with much regret, Ken would be running the meeting, and I don't think that would go well for anyone. No, absolutely, Ken can't handle it.
Well, I mean, unless anyone has an objection, why don't we just cancel it, and then if there is something that we need to meet on, I can always call, special meeting for another night.
All right, and I just had a few things. I want to let the board know, we previously sent out an invitation. I have tickets to the youth court dinner and silent auction. It's this Wednesday at six PM at the Community Center. I believe we currently have at least two tickets left over, so if any, if any of you would like to attend it, please let me know. Six to seven thirty, I believe. We're getting a final count on the attendance right now, so let me know tomorrow if you would like to go, or this evening. And then the last thing, I just wanted to let you know that on Friday, Alderman Stratton and I attended elected official training at MPR. It was put on by Lauberman Municipal Law. Fantastic training. I think probably most of you have been there at one time or another. They covered just an overview of municipal government, ordinances, resolutions, and parliamentary procedure, ethics, conflict of interest, nepotism, sovereign immunity, the sunshine law, service contracts, taxation and revenue, and zoning and annexation. The reason I'm letting all of you know is that I'm going to be sending you an email out with all of the PowerPoints from that, which have a tremendous amount of information. I know you get sometimes a barrage of emails from me. This is definitely one that if you have the time, just flip through it, and you can get a tremendous amount of information just from the items that I'll send you, so. Nothing else to report, Mr. Mayor.
Next up, board of Alderman reports and comments. We'll give you a break this week, I'm gonna start over here. But it confuses me doing this way, so I'm gonna have to start you next. All right, Alderman West? Alderman Hedley? Alderman Coleman?
I'd just like to once again congratulate you, Dale, on your time on the board. We appreciate your service, and we'll keep you in our minds going forward. That's all I have to say.
Alderman Totten?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Stratton?
Um, actually, I wanted to thank you, Dale, for your years of service, and thanks to the voters for bringing me out. I'm excited for the opportunity.
Uh, next up, mayor's report. I have a couple things. Let me see for Ken and Rick. I know we've talked about this extensively, but I don't know if we've really talked about it with the whole four. For the next meeting, could we kind of have a synopsis, update on Creekside Village and what all we've talked about over there? I know we, I know Jim's been involved, I know the issues with the alleyways, there's issues with some curbs deteriorating, but we can't really do anything with the curbs until alleyways are taken care of, and maybe even talk about kind of what we know about the HOA situation and all that, and kind of goes back to last year, too, when we had the pest problems with the overgrown grass and everything, so. You just kind of put some stuff together for us, and since that's, I know they're starting to contact me regarding curbs, and we know they're going to be done, and things like that, so.
I know, Jimmy, did you and Matt talk to the attorney about the alleyways?
I did, we did. And we talked to, I talked to them about two weeks ago, maybe, not two weeks ago, and we kind of went through the chronology of how the HOA got where it is, and how the problem got where it is. And I put it back to them to tell me, us, what the chronology is, so we know how to proceed. And it was obvious to me that they needed to do, Jonathan Sur, is the lawyer, and he wanted, he needed to get back with the HOA, kind of do some due diligence, and figure out what happened in the chain of events from Tebby to the successor to that, so. I'll follow up with him as well.
Any pictures that we have? I think the curb problems they're having are pretty much all tied into the alleys, I think, but we might go out and look at the other curbs, too, on the streets, like on the main streets that don't have the alleys. And I know now some of the houses are in the floodplain, too. I think that's a new wrench in it, so you might give us an update on that, too. I know that's FEMA, not us, so. Just kind of an overall update, because I'm sure we'll be... There's some more from residents over there, so this will be, we're all in six face. Uh, then the next item, and I did kind of give a warning on this as well, but if we could, by the next meeting, have kind of presentations, information on what we would see a citizens' police board looking like, I would like to start looking at that process. You know, we have, you know, planning zoning, we have community development, but we don't have, you know, like a citizens' police board. I know other communities have that. Now, my vision, my vision of that is just, you know...